Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining us again on 1341 Springmore. Our weekly town hall meeting at 2 o'clock. This is, I don't know, episode, I don't know, seven, eight? I'm not sure. But they're continuing to roll along. We may phase these out eventually. I know y'all will be disappointed when y'all don't see these every Wednesday at 2 o'clock, but hopefully things kind of get back to normal. We'll phase these out and kind of get back to more of a normal routine and maybe watching more exercise videos instead of me at 2 o'clock. But this has been fun to do and we won't stop anytime soon right now. But anyway, just want to say thanks again for joining us and listening to see what all is going on. This is a good way to let everybody know some of the happenings and changes and things we're doing. And of course, we'll always send out a memo to recap stuff. The auditorium is set up a little different. I wish y'all could see it. It's all the chairs are out minus about, well, there's more than 10, but we can only have 10 in a gathering. So we purposely put them in here. I think some committees are going to start meeting again. I think the management advisory committee I know is meeting next Wednesday at 3 o'clock and another meeting in here. So we just have to be mindful of keeping those gatherings, including any guests such as myself or Holly or anybody that you bring in from a department can only have 10 people inside for a gathering. So just be mindful of that. A lot of committees are small enough to do that. Some of the larger ones like food service or endowment, those are much larger. So we may want to just maybe take some volunteers or you guys can figure out how to make that happen. But just remember 10 people anytime you gather. And auditorium is not being used as much. Still need to check with Leah to make sure it's reserved and you have it for your time. So anytime you want to start meeting, just let me know or if I need to be there, if it's a committee I normally come to. If it's not, I don't need to know like normal or make sure that the specific department manager knows so they can attend too. So hopefully we can start these back this week or excuse me, this month and next month and even into August. So sometimes we take off during the summer. So I heard some people are going to continue to just skip the months and just go through summer without meeting. And some said, well, I think we're going to meet at least once, maybe all summer to get caught back up on stuff. So it's all preference of the committee chair. So we'll wait to hear from y'all and see what happens. I wanted to start off by talking, well, I want to obviously start off talking about that, but next I want to talk about our employee fund. We are in the final stages of tallying up everything. We stopped over, I guess, Monday. We've had some money trickling in even Tuesday and Wednesday, which is today. So we're going to finish up that tally and then we'll be making an announcement later this week or first of the next week about totals and how many donors and how much each employee is going to get and how we're going to disperse that money. I had a good meeting with Ms. Jan Christensen last Friday outside on fourth floor valley. It was very nice on the patio and we talked a little bit and discussed some ideas that we have to make sure that we have a chance to say thank you from the resident association as well. So we're going to work on that. I know there's a lot of people that help with that. A lot of people that I know wanted to help and do more. And we put this together pretty quick, but it's been beyond successful and I'm really, really excited to share that with you. So we're finishing those total numbers. Leah's been staying on me or staying in touch with me every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday about that. So we've had an incredible turnout. So we'll let you know that as soon as we can. The main things I want to talk about today is the reopening of things are in phase two and how we're going to incorporate that into Springmore. So I'm going to hit out some highlights on areas and then there'll be specific memos sent out by specific departments regarding very fine details about that. So for instance, dining, we're going to start that next Tuesday. So I'm going to hit some highlights, but Jennifer is going to be preparing a memo with all the details about all the things you need to know. I had some questions submitted today and those were great. We're going to use some of those as some frequently asked questions or some questions and answers, but it's just too much to cover on the broadcast. I don't want it to get just jumbled amongst everything else in the recap memo. So we'll send out a brief recap memo this time, but just be looking for specific info on dining, specific info on fitness, and then specific info on the salons. So all that will be coming out. The salon stuff may be in this memo. So if you don't see a separate memo regarding salons, everything that you need to know will be in the recap memo. So we're going to start talking about phase two and kind of let you know how we're doing that. We're taking a lot of, we're following state and industry guidelines and also our task force that we created. So obviously, we have to follow our state guidelines, which are gatherings are no more of 10 inside and gatherings are no more 25 outside. And the restaurants we fall under, the pools we fall under, all those, we're licensed by the city of Raleigh and by Wake County. So we have to follow those guidelines. But there's also industry guidelines that help us even more specifically with that. So that's where we're getting a lot of our information from. So I just want to let you know it's not just, we're going off the state. It's going off industry stuff from leading age as well. So again, that's with dining rooms, chapels, fitness areas, pools, salon, and then outdoor spaces. So just kind of give you a little bit of background on that. And I had a document that I was going to show y'all. It just has some basic information about that, but I got it all written down. So nothing too much. It's just kind of like a roadmap document that just kind of shows the operational processes from a leading age standpoint of how to reopen amenities. So we'll dive into dining. That's probably the one that people are most interested about. So as I said, Jennifer is going to be sending out a separate memo with more detailed information. These are just going to be some highlights. So I'm going to hit those now. The main thing to know is that dining will be starting back Tuesday, June 2nd. I think Tuesday is June 2nd, right? I'll let Daniel, our producer, very good producer by the way, do the check. So June 2nd is Tuesday. They're going to open up, we're going to be able to open up both North and South Village dining rooms at a 25% capacity. So restaurants, as you know, probably can open to a 50% capacity, but we're not going to go that full amount. We don't feel comfortable with that quite yet. And also, the way that our tables are arranged, we have to make sure the tables are six feet apart. We have proper social distancing. So we're opening at a 25% capacity. So that will be no more than 40 people at a time in either North Village dining room or South Village dining room. So just be mindful that we will have the dining rooms open. Takeout will be available again and delivery will continue. So you have three options now come Tuesday. You can come to the dining room. You can do, you can come do takeout and pick up your food or you can still have your food delivered. We'll do the delivery until we feel comfortable having everybody come to the dining room or pick up their food again to where we can have a better flow. But the delivery is, it helps us with the amount of space we have to do takeout and the limited seating capacity in the dining rooms. Plus, I think there's some residents that are probably a little hesitant to come out. So we still want to offer that option for everybody. So in the dining room, we'll have a full menu. We will have a limited salad bar, but it will not be self-serve. So where the entree salads are now on the line, they will have somebody actually fixing your salad for you from the salad bar. So it will not be as many items, but it will be a salad bar and you just kind of tell the attendant what you want and they'll fix it. The entree salads will be coming back. And so that'll happen. Grill and bistro. The grill and bistro will not be open for service as far as eating in there, but we're going to be utilizing it for takeout and for delivery. So a couple of changes, just a couple of highlights. We'll be offering a full menu breakfast starting June 2nd. So that is going to be by delivery. So now there's not just the four options. You'll have the whole menu to choose from. So we can do a full-service breakfast. Lunch and dinner can be a delivery or a takeout, and that's going to consist of limited to-go items. And they're not going to be traditional grill items right yet. We still need that space to prepare the food. We still need the workers to help with delivering and just everything that the food service has had to do, especially working out the mobile kitchen. So we've got to kind of ease back into things as we kind of ease off things. So we're going to have some really cool heat and serve items like, I don't know, I'm going to use something that may not be on the menu, but like a lasagna that you can get like a single serving where you could go and just heat that up in your oven or your microwave. Going to have some sandwiches and traditional stuff like that, but we're not going to have the full-service menu at the bistro as far as hamburgers and hot dogs as of yet. They're going to be, again, grab-and-go items and they'll be by delivery if you want to have it delivered or you can do takeout. So again, all the details will be coming through Jennifer. All the details about reservations for dining, you'll have to have a reservation for dining. I don't have the specific information on that. She will send that out with the times, the procedure for that. She'll have the specific information for the takeout process and how you do that. And then she'll have the specific information for the grill and bistro for takeout and for delivery. But just know that June 2nd dining rooms are opening again, 25% capacity, no more than 40 people, and we'll have a full menu in the dining room. Breakfast will be full service again, but not actually eating in the grill or the bistro. And then lunch and dinner options will be available by takeout or delivery by the grill and bistro. So we have that, which is really exciting. And again, just look for more information, probably tomorrow, Friday, the absolute latest with all that stuff. And then if you have any specific questions after you read the memo, you can call Jennifer and she can answer all that for you. Next is going to be fitness. So we have worked hard. I know Kerry Ritchie has worked very hard to get our fitness stuff squared away. I hope I brought that. I don't think I did. Great. Okay, yeah, you can put that up there. So, oh goodness, fitness, fitness. So I'm going to see if I can go find that. I'm going to jump onto something else. I didn't bring all my notes. It's been a busy day. So we'll jump into life enrichment and then we'll do some chaplain stuff as well. We're having a lady, Gretchen Wilson, who does all of our masks. Well, she does a lot of our art stuff here at Springmore. She's making custom masks for male and females and they are starting to come in. They are there for supportive living. They're going to be coming in for supportive living starting today. And then the other areas, they'll be coming in, you know, in the next few days and weeks. So just be mindful of that. We'll have a whole nother mask option for you. I know, I think we issued everybody cloth masks. We ordered some masks and I know we had those delivered to everybody, but this will be another mask you can use. I'm sure this will go on for a while. So this may be a little more comfortable, maybe a little more durable. But supportive living is getting there today and then the other areas should start getting those in the next few days and in the next few weeks. So they're coming in as they are made. For the announcements for the chaplains, some continued kind of weekly stuff here. We'll host another Zoom discussion group tomorrow from 10:30 to 11:15. And remember, if you have any, if you need help with Zoom, Juliana or Lori can help you with that. You can use that through a phone, through a tablet, through a computer. It's an interactive way of connecting with each other. So that will be, the next discussion group is tomorrow from 10:30 to 11:15. The chaplains will begin the next five-week Bible study called Fear and Faith, and that's beginning this coming Tuesday, June 2nd at 3:00 PM. And that will be on Springmore TV as well. They'll explore human fears and the role of our faith in God during this time of pandemic, as we've all begun to realize the virus is changing the very fabric of our lives and our relationships. How do we move past our fear of what may be lost towards a stronger faith in God, who is truly our hope and our salvation? So look for that. That sounds pretty good, kind of exactly what we're going through now. And then please continue for worship on Sunday. Ruth and DG Harwood Sunday School class was led by Mr. Jackson. It's at 10:00 AM on Springmore TV and then Vespers at 7:00 PM on Springmore TV. So I think Kerry Ritchie, did she do last week? Kerry Ritchie did our guest Vespers. So I didn't get to see that yet, but I'm sure she did a really good job. So I hope you all enjoy that. I don't know who's doing this week. Juliana is doing this week. So that's good. So hopefully she'll have a good message for us. I do have my fitness updates now. And again, these are a few highlights. Again, specifics will be sent out, but we will continue with the small group exercises as we've been doing with 10 or less. Those are done by reservation. So continue to do that. That is working well. Remember, we can only have 10 people in there at a time. So we've had to keep the exercise equipment off limits in the great room. And if we have more than 10 people show up, you know, we have to make sure we don't have 10 and somebody has to leave. So make sure you're following that with the reservations. We're excited to announce the pool is going to open Monday, June 1st as well. There'll be a lot of new protocols and a lot of new details that everyone will have to follow. Kerry is working all that out and she will have that out by Monday. But she will have some small classes in the pool and they'll require reservation just like the other classes. So again, we'll have some aquatic exercise classes in the pool starting Monday and it will require reservation and she'll send out information specifically how to do that. And with all the pool rules, usage, and restrictions we got to do, the pool will be available for free swim and individual usage by appointment only. So you got to contact Kerry 48 hours in advance to reserve your free swim in the pool. And for safety reasons, locker rooms will not be available for showering and changing. Bathrooms will be available if needed. And residents are encouraged to dry off and leave promptly so the next people can come in. And there will be a 15-minute window between appointments and classes. So we've got a little timeframe in between. Make sure we can clean everything we need to and properly sanitize and we can get the other people in. So I think this goes, I think everybody knows this, but even though we're opening up the pool and everything, all of this, again, is just for residents. So there's no employees, there's no visitors, there's no family members. It's just Springmore residents. So just be very, very mindful of that. But we'll have that pool open on the 2nd, which is really good. So she'll send out more information about that. The salons, that's pretty complicated. I had actually a really good meeting with all the contract stylists this morning and they're having to work under a lot of restrictions. If you've been to a salon yet or get your hair cut, you may have noticed that. I'm actually going today at 6 o'clock to get my hair cut. So I'm ready to get this chopped off. But they're under a lot of restrictions and we're under a lot more restrictions here due to our size and due to our population. So I'm just going to hit some highlights here. And again, we'll send out some more information. They're going to start back on Monday. So the salons will open on Monday. Just be very mindful that there's limited space for both areas. So we can have no more than four customers in the North Village Salon and the South Village Salon. So we can have up to four customers at a time in North Village and four customers at a time over in South Village. That is based on square footage per customer. The way our square footage falls allows us to only have four. That does not include the stylist. So if we have three people in there, one is getting their hair cut and one's underneath the dryer and one's getting a manicure, we can still have one more, maybe getting a pedicure. But the stylist could be there too. So there may be seven people in there, but only four customers. That includes sitting outside in the chairs in the salon. So any residents considered a customer. So just be very mindful of that, that we can only have four people in there. They're going to start calling as early as today to start setting up appointments. If you had a standing appointment, it may take a while to get that back. It may be at different times. We had a pretty good running schedule of days and times that certain people are here, but until we get caught back up, different people may be here different days and different times, coming in earlier, leaving later. So they will be calling and setting stuff up. One reminder they wanted me to let you know is please do not just come by for a walk-in appointment. Don't just walk in the salon because if they have four people in there, they're going to have to stop what they're doing, going to have to ask you to leave. I know it's very tedious, but it's a very strict thing. It's a licensed area, just like the pool. So it's got to be manned and monitored all the time. We have a business license for the salon and they all have professional license to cut the hair. So both could be in danger if we're violating those rules. So they'll start calling today. We'll set the appointments individually. Don't just walk in. And there's going to be no waiting inside the salon unless it's four people. So if there's only two people in there and they call you down and say, all right, Mrs. Jones, I'm not sure I'm Miss Jones we have here, but I know we have Linda Jones. It's like Linda Jones wants to come up and Putney drives her up here to the salon here in North Village. And there's only two people in there and she walks in, yes, she can sit there and wait as long as she's, you know, no more than four. But they're going to do a better job. We're not just going to have people just waiting in there. A lot of times we have people that have an aide come up. They can't just sit in there because that takes up space for the customers. So they're going to be very organized. So just bear with them with phone calls and they got to take time in between customers to sanitize and clean. So it's going to be slow going for a while. Another thing that really holds us back here that we cannot do is we cannot mix the health center residents with the independent residents. So if there are, so they're going to work out a schedule of how they're going to do that. I've left that to them. That's their cup of tea, but they know absolutely a resident from the health center and a resident from independent living cannot be in there at the same time. So we are letting the skilled nursing people come out to get their hair done because that's considered an essential service, but they have to be in there by themselves. If they have an aide, they can stand outside and wait, but they cannot sit in there and wait because that will take up space for the customer. So I'm not sure how they're going to work that out, but usually there's a mingling of health center people and independents. So that's going to have to be separate for now. That's probably going to be the same way for quite some time until things loosen up on the health center restrictions. I don't see that happening for unfortunately quite some time, probably August at the earliest. So just be mindful of that. That's going to play a big part in it. Lastly, if you do call for an appointment and nobody answers, it's going to roll over to the front desk and then the front desk is going to take your name and your number and then the stylist will call you back. I just think the phones are going to be ringing off the hook. They don't have an answering machine. So instead of having to stop and they can only have so many people in there at a time and there won't be as much staff in there because they can only have so many customers in there, there won't be somebody just answering the phone all the time. So if they don't answer, they will if they can. If they don't answer, roll to the front desk, leave your name and number, and they'll check every couple of hours by the end of the day and they'll call you back to set up your appointment. So again, we'll get this out in some more detail in a memo or it will either go in the recap memo, but just basically the salon is opening on Monday and just all you have to do is just wait for them to call you and they'll tell you what to do. So that'd be good. So just bear with us for a while. The last thing I want to talk about before we take questions is visitations. That's been a hot topic and it's something I want to go and address and go ahead and get in motion. Since the stay-at-home order was lifted, I guess it was last Friday, and it's what's called Safer at Home. It's pretty clever. Like I got around that and excluded some things. I really do think that was probably pretty smart instead of just saying he jumped right into phase two. But as you know, you can leave to go to more places now, which technically I guess you never could have not gone anywhere. But so that allows you to go and do more things. So it's kind of came to a point where I alluded to last week of I can only control what happens at Springmore. Can't control what happens outside or what y'all do. I don't want to do that. I don't want to control anybody or have such authoritative rules, only enough to protect and keep everybody safe. And at this point, I'm kind of operating within the guidelines that I've been given through the state and through our task force, through our industry, and then what we as management think is best. So starting Monday, we're going to allow outside visits. There's no reason we can't allow that for independent living folks. So we're going to go back to the way we were before we cut that off. No visitors inside. We're still going to keep the doors turned off, but we can do visits outside six feet apart. So there's nothing stopping me from letting you visit staff, visit family outside up to six feet apart. It is time to let that happen. If you want to go somewhere to the beach, you're more than welcome to do that. If you want to go see your family, you know, I can't stop you from doing that. I wouldn't want to. Just be very mindful of who you're around, what you're doing. And every time you leave Springmore and exposed to stuff and you come back, that's just, just be cautious of that. I don't want to put fear in anybody. I'm not a fear monger by any means of that stuff. I've had to be much more cautious and I probably would have been personally during all this. So I want everybody to be safe and be thoughtful, but just use common sense. You know, if you go out, you know, don't hug and kiss your family members. I know you probably want to, but that's probably not the best thing to do. If they're here, make sure that they're six feet apart. Please know they cannot go inside the building. We're working on having two clean common spaces for North and South Village. That may be up by Monday or it may not be. We want to provide an indoor location at the entrance of both North Village and South Village that can be monitored and they can be checked in at certain times and allow families to visit 30-minute increments. So a couple of areas have been proposed. There's the main lobby in North Village where you come right in there, get your temperature checked, and you can visit right there in that lobby. And it's, hate to say monitored, but it is. It can be monitored by the reception. They're 24/7, but we do like an 8 to 5 type thing for 30-minute increments. And that would all be scheduled. And then in, I guess that would be North Village. South Village, it would be right in the gathering room, right to the left behind the security guard. Again, you would have an appointment. You'd sign in, you'd get screened, you'd visit there. It'd be monitored and then only during 30-minute increments. So we have not finalized that yet, but once we do, we'll put that out and that will be allowed. So that's the only place that families can come into the building when that's announced. So again, that has not happened yet. Visitors are not allowed on campus until June 1st. We're starting all this on June 1st minus the dining, which is going to be June 2nd. So we have tried to stay about a week behind of things when that came out by the state. So we can make sure that we customize it to Springmore to make sure everybody is as safe as possible, but also to allow all the residents all of their rights and their freedoms and everything that they're gracious enough to have amongst all the regulations. So we don't want to stop you of that, but we've still got to keep it very low-key. I'm not sure when visitors will be able to enter the building. I don't think families will be able to enter the building until other people can enter the building without having to be screened or answered the questions as far as coming to your actual residents. So right now, all the staff members in any vendor is screened and they answer questions before they go anywhere within Springmore. A lot of times, people are escorted to certain areas and they're escorted right back. The only way to do that with family members would be to lock all the doors and have everybody come through the front entrance to be screened and to be escorted to the residency and then escorted back. So we don't want to do that. We're hoping that now that we're allowing visits outside, that we're going to soon have visits in the common areas in North[1692.13] we're about, uh, going to soon have visits in the common areas in North and South Village and you're more free to go, um, visit and go do that hopefully that will, that will, you know, tide everybody over for a little bit about having, um, actually family members come into, um, actual residences. So I think a lot of people prefer that. I've heard that. I think they're ready to see family, but not quite ready for them to come in here and I'm, and I'm not either. It's just too much, um, too much at risk when they come in, um, not being screened. So, so hopefully that's a happy medium for visitations and then we'll continue to just see how that evolves. We'll see that for a while. If it does good, um, we'll keep doing it that way. If it gets, where I'm getting complaints and there's family members roaming the halls, you might have to go back to no visitation. It's, it's worked really well for a long time. I've been very pleased with it. Um, but we can't go like this forever. So, um, it has been recommended that we do have common clean areas for families to come in and it's been suggested that we do allow outside visits. Um, the health center is still going to be different. We're still going to do the window visits, but any one-on-one visits, I, I wish I could tell you, but that is just, that is not up to me unfortunately. That is, um, that's all regulated by certain healthcare agencies and, um, people way above my pay grade. Um, those are the people that tell me what to do. Like I have to tell people here sometimes what to do. So, um, and it's all through a license and that's, um, I kind of like it that way. So I don't have to, it's pretty black or white. So anyway, um, sorry, that's a little, little less unprepared than normal and had some stuff, but I hope that covered everything. I just don't want to give too much detail because we need to send out memos, um, with all the stuff. It's starting back, uh, but just be patient as things slowly ramp up with dining and slowly with the salons and slowly with the pools. But we want to control, um, the amenities in Springmore to offer y'all as much as we can. So with all of that said, I will be happy to try to answer any questions. Um, 7054 is the number, um, to call and I'll, I'll answer anything you have. Um, if it's something really specific about dining or salons or fitness, I'll probably just wait until the memo comes back. If it's something short and sweet I can answer, I'll be happy to do that. But, um, I'd rather just wait for those informations to come out and just let you know, hey, things are starting back and they're starting, uh, Monday and Tuesday, which is hopefully good news for y'all. Yep. Uh, so the question was if you go out of town to the beach, you still have to quarantine? No, we're, we're not requiring that anymore. Um, if you go, um, to the, to the beach or to the mountains, um, I think that is fine. I would highly encourage you to please tell me if you are flying anywhere. If you are flying on an airplane, going to a big city that's a hotspot or a huge metropolitan area, that is a totally different story. We have been, um, it's been suggested that we still continue to quarantine on any plane ride and after any metro area, especially hotspots. But going to the beach for a weekend, to your own condo or to your house or the mountains or renting something, um, yeah, that's, that's available and I don't want to tell you, you can't do it. Again, just use common sense, be mindful of what you're doing when you're around people as you go out and just, just, just be cautious. But no more quarantine if you, if you want to go to the beach for a weekend. Uh, question is, is there any plan for testing staff and residents? Um, not unless we have to. Um, that is something that may be required in the health center, but it will not be required in independent living. Um, again, they say tests are readily available. If you please know of where I can get some legitimately get some, please let me know. Um, again, if something would happen at Springmore, the local health department will come in and take care of all of that. So, um, just like the other issue we had with the, with the employee, they were very involved. Um, but no, there are no plans as of now to test all employees or staff until, and, and, until it's required to. The question was how many people at a table in a dining room? I do not have the specific information for that. I think Jennifer will put that in her memo. Um, I'll go on a limb and say, I think four max. And that's going to be like two tables pushed together. So it would be one, two, three, four, but they'll be far enough apart and then far enough distance wise. But I, I am not sure about that. I know it's a max of 40 people and, um, and she'll send out the specifics on that and you'll be guided with all that. I don't mean to just kind of brush it off, but they're going to escort you in and they'll tell you where to sit and you've got to make a reservation. So, so all of that will come in the next, in the next few days. Good question. So the, um, so the hospital visits, um, are they still required for quarantine? If you stay in the hospital overnight for a procedure, yes, you will need to be quarantined for the 14 days. We may loosen that to 10 or seven days eventually, but for right now, our infection control nurse and, um, from the guidelines we're hearing is anytime you are admitted to a hospital and you stay over a certain amount of time, 24 hours, that you do need to be isolated. If it is an ER visit, that's going to be a case by case basis based on the clinic and the nurses. A lot of ERs are doing, um, they have separate sections now. So if you go in, there's an area where you'd go for just general things of, I broke my toe to, I think I got the coronavirus. So they're doing a really good job of keeping people separated in certain hospitals and a certain emergency rooms have different parts. So we're going to let the nurses, um, determine if you need to be quarantined after an ER stay. Um, it may be something where we check you for 48 hours or temperature, um, for two or three days. Um, but those are going to be on a case by case basis. Um, premium entrees, from what I understand, premium entrees are only today, tomorrow and Friday. I believe they were for supper only. I could be wrong, but I believe they were for dinner only. So those, we're not going to continue those, um, after Friday because now we're going to move into offering more options with the dining room and more options with the grill. And we're finishing up in the mobile kitchen and hopefully going to be in our real kitchen by hopefully the end of June. Um, about June 15th is when they should be done with everything. By the time we get all the equipment back in and the inspections done, it'd be end of June, early July before we're in there. So, um, so we wanted to do the, the premium entree thing. It's our two week thing. As we knew we were hopefully going to be able to open the dining room back up. So of course that was a short-lived thing, but, um, so we can offer more stuff now, but we'll bring that back just as soon as we can. So the question is, um, can family members take residents out to stores like Walgreens or, or Target or somewhere like that? Um, yeah, I, I mean, sure. I mean, I can't, I can't stop you from doing that by any means. Um, again, just be mindful. Um, yeah, I mean, that, that's just, there's no, I, I have no way, I, there's no way I could explain to you how I could not let you do that. I just, I, I beat it in my head a hundred times. Um, y'all are all very much grown, intelligent adults and I am not, and you're not in prison and thankfully you're not in the health center where you can't go. So yes, um, you can go, just, just be mindful of where you are and what you're doing whenever you're out. Oh yeah, it's a good question. So, um, mask, um, when residents should be wearing them? Residents and staff should still be wearing these anytime they're in a common area. So anytime you're in the hallways, anytime you're outside of your apartment, other than being outside, um, six feet apart, you need to have masks on. Um, that will be one thing that's going to be required for the hairstylist. I forgot about that. Uh, the hairstylist will be wearing masks and the residents will be wearing masks as too whenever, whenever they're getting their hair done. Now, if they're sitting underneath a dryer, um, I would for sure pass out if I had on a mask underneath one of those dryers. I'd pass out if I was even underneath one of those dryers. They're so hot, but, but you don't have to wear them underneath the dryer, but when they are actually cutting your hair or fixing your hair or doing a perm, you will have to have a mask. So they got creative how, of how they're going to do it, not have it around your ears and get all your color right and all that good stuff. So, uh, it was demonstrated to me today by one of the stylists, Wanda. Um, so, uh, but yes, you'll need to wear those when you're in the salon, getting your hair cut, and then anytime you're in a common area. You'll need to wear them, like I said, walking all the way to the dining room. When you get into the dining room, obviously you can take it off as you begin to eat and drink. So. Question, uh, updates for the renovation of the health center. Um, I'm going to refer to my assistant Brad. Brad, what's any, what is, what's our latest updates? All right. So exciting information in the next resident memo. Holly's pretty precise on that thing. So in the next three days or so, you'll probably see that, maybe four. If she was waiting on article for me, it'd be the absolute June 1st, but we'll do another guest column this month, I think. Um, but yeah, there is moving along. Brad, um, who's over to the left, you can't see him. He has continued to move this through seamlessly through this. The, the good part is none of the construction efforts have stopped during this time. The architects have still been working. Um, the, um, the contractor's still working, um, and the government agencies that are approving everything are still working. So we got hung up on some stuff that is just part of the process of submitting stuff to make sure. I mean, it's so meticulous. I, I, I can't even imagine, can't even tell you how meticulous it is and doorknobs and it's just, it makes your head hurt to think how, how many little things it is. Brad's doing an awesome job with that and he's, um, he's stayed on top of it. So it has not skipped a beat, but he will have you a full update come June. I actually forgot he, uh, he had night, wrote a nice piece about it. So it should answer all your questions though. It is moving along nicely. All right. Well, thank y'all. I hope I, um, didn't cause any confusion and just hopefully just gave you some basic information and just hopefully some excitement of some things opening back at Springmore and, um, and just kind of getting back to some kind of normal way of life. But again, on a very limited basis, uh, more limited than the general public. We're always going to be like that due to our environment and the, and the people we serve, which are each of you. Just want to make sure y'all are as safe as possible, um, by, um, by implementing things that are more strict, but allowing you to do things that you have every God given right to do. So anyway, I hope that helps. And if you have any questions, we're always here to help you and I will send out a memo and we'll probably for sure see you next week. Okay. Thanks. Have a great day.